All right, we're back in open session. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start off with our citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments tonight? All right, Mr. Williams. Please, uh, approach the podium, give your name and address. We know it, but we gotta do it. It's only.
My name is Ben Reed. Two one seven one five, I ran the road. My question to the mayor, city administration here. I don't believe in good events around my property. I think we should have freedom in America. For this to be a free. My question to you is, if a dog walked by my house and he choose to use the bathroom in my yard, who is responsible to get it up? Next question. If a dog walked by my house and choose to use the bathroom in my property, do I have a right to use a training aid where you not use it in my property?
A training aid?
Training aid.
What is the training aid?
I took it to the door, down the control, and I said, "This is training aid." She said, "Yes, that's a training aid." I said, "Can you use the brakes, brother?" She said, "Let me see what you can do about it." I went to the dealer, "Did you get it though?" So, training aid comes in trouble.
What is the training?
Training aid, you some, they tell you stop talking, and you continue talking. In that, brother.
Yeah, but what is the, the actual aid itself?
I don't know what it is.
Uh, it's just one of those things that does the high-pitched frequencies.
That's what I think it is, but I, I will say that's what it is because to me, to worry about it, a training aid.
Oh.
Do I have to use it? I can use it.
Now, here it goes. So, why do you have a training aid for a dog that you don't own?
Because it's not his property. Why would you dedicate over my property? You don't own this property.
I, I agree with Mr. Williams, but that dog, when he's gotta go, he finds his spot, and he's gonna go.
I agree with you pretty much, citizen. But what I was also saying, the owner of the dog should walk around with a dog bag in his hand, so if you do for my, for my property, you should pay it up. But if you don't, who will you probably take it up now?
Is the dog on leash? The dog was running.
That's what I was, I was saying, what I said.
But was the dog by itself, or was there?
No, it was a body, which helps.
Yeah, then that should be the owner that cleans that up. But that's out of courtesy. I, I gotta look at the verbiage in the ordinance. I don't know if it actually says that verb made or... I know it does at the park.
Did they have the dog on a leash?
Yes.
I would think personally, with the dog, would be responsible. Like the mayor said, I don't know what's in our.
Yeah, I have to double-check the verbiage. I know we, we have clarified that in the park, and we've put those, uh, devices out there for the cleanup. But as far as the neighborhoods, if it's not in there, that's something that we need to look at, add to it. And, uh, so we can...
Do you, do you know where that person lives?
No. No, but I have ideas, but they, no, they, they take time from me. He got a month off, so I could have been, but I, I should have called. But it's, it's one drop. You know? Thing that I appreciate about the day, the summer, though, they take that dog from walk. They take a bag of dog, or I didn't get choose to do it, and they pick it up, ask, because I did it as their dog. It didn't came. For years, I made my children pick it up. My stepmother, I'm not thinking of playing my dog. Why should I pick it up? Now, mayor, city hall. I want somebody to think what actually can be taken. What, but should I, I don't, you did everything correct?
Can you give us some time to look at the ordinance and talk about it? Until then, I mean, I can make sure that we can get back with you as soon as, possibly next week, at least with the ordinance.
Oh, by the way, I visit company manager. I got bit seven times with dogs that don't bite. Also, when I was young, I had five dogs. I had six pets, one of them was big.
I agree, we, we need to probably look at that and, uh, and during the council discussion, we can talk a little bit more about it. And then before that, I guess we can do a quick search on our ordinance and, uh, see what it says. With that being said, are there any other citizen comments? Okay. At this portion, we have, uh, an award presentation, and I want to, uh, first say that I'm very proud of, uh, of the, the city, the staff, council members. Um, we just had a MML conference this last week, and we started on Sunday, it ended yesterday. Um, a lot of great information. Uh, but we had two staff members, Bee and Melanie, and we also had Councilman Don Hayden, who had completed their municipal official certification. And they was awarded this in the setting of the MML conference, which is the 90th MML conference that they had here in the, um, the state. So I just wanna say, the work that they did, going above and beyond to learn more about their job, and even things that's outside of the, the realm of their job, to make them better employees and councilmen. I wanna say that, I wanted to present their awards again here in this forum, so that everyone can understand what this really means. What it means is, uh, they can tell you, they can give you some feedback on it. They learn a lot of information. Um, it gives you a lot more things to think about. It kinda helps to build those boundaries and gives you a lot more understanding, so you can be a little bit more, um, just read in, effective in, in our duties as council members, whether they be elected or staff members. And it really, it, it looked at a time of bringing us together, the staff and the council and elected members, to be able to do our job, um, better. And then I, I really appreciate having dinner with them and lunch, sitting there, talking to them about things. But, uh, I think it's a, a great program, and I encourage anyone that is, that desires to learn more about your job and what the city does and how municipalities actually function and operate. I think it'll be a, a, a great, a great, uh, time to, to grow and learn. And that's the one thing you can never stop doing. Never stop learning, because things are always changing. With that being said, I wanna bring everyone up at the same time, and I wanna present them with their certificates. We're gonna give them a cer- certificate tonight. I gave them, um, coins, and they also have their flags on this.
Do I stick it up?
Absolutely. Yes?
Come on, you two.
So, we're gonna have you.
Go be shy.
We give them a round of applause as they move up here. Against the wall. And, uh, what I wanna do...
I'm gonna make it there, I'm gonna do it.
Is this, this is a certificate of excellence. Um, the following award is given to Melanie, Bee, and Don, uh, for completion of the Missouri Municipal League's rigorous certification, Certified Elected Official, uh, Training Course and obtain their Certified Elected Officials Status in 2024. Um, the, the program, again, like I said, they had to do planning and zoning. And I'm gonna give you a time to say something. So the first person I'm gonna give that award is Mr. Hayden. We'll do this. I did, I did. I forgot, I'm retired.
One, two, three, got it.
It's Melanie Bruce. That's you.
There we go. Sorry, it's gonna make me laugh. Okay, what?
It's all good.
One, two, three, got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Did you see how she did that?
No.
It's okay, we're learning this together. There we go, there you go. What are you learning? One, two, three, gotcha.
Let's give them another round of applause. Did you wanna say something? We'll start with elected official first, and we'll move to the staff.
I think the elected official often speaks, so we'll let the staff talk.
No, I just said, uh, let the official go first.
Uh, the other thing I would say is, coming into this, it was really, really educational to learn all the different... And I bothered John every week about it. So, it was, there's a lot of good information.
Okay, all right.
For me, I'm like, it's, it's rewarding because things in your city that you don't normally deal with, you get to learn behind the scene of the different things and how different things come together. I will say, when we were there, there was lots of councilmen there and women. So, I mean, there, there really was. And we talked to, we talked, networked, all that kinda stuff. So like you, I mean, you learn emergency management, you learn sunshine law, you learn, I mean, planning and zoning, budgets. Yeah, so all that, all that kinda stuff. And it's, it's, you learn something more that you don't have every day, that you don't see of things that's going on in the background.
And what was your favorite one? I, she kinda said it before, your favorite, uh...
My favorite subject with taking the MML was the economic development. Cause you got to see how new businesses come in and how they develop for small businesses, just different, the different kinds of aspects. And it just kept it more interesting, cause it made you want to know more. So, that was what it was for me.
Okay, all right, Ms. Bee.
What she said, right?
Sorry, I'm sorry. It's all right. It just makes you, instead of just the job that you do, um, it lets you get more into what everybody's job is in the city. And it explains it more than just seeing the actions in the city.
And not only that, like you said, it shows how everybody comes together. And each department is in some way connected as well.
And Bee, she taking her time. But you did, you also brought some finance stuff back with you.
Yes, yes.
Things like that, so, okay. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations. Lot of info, man. Okay. We'll move on to the city. I'll give you a second. All dog owners, okay, I got this here. All right. So, all dog owners, just going back to that, that, uh, the dog issue. All dog owners... Had to make it big, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. I only got my long range tonight. So, I can't wear those. All dog owners are required to provide adequate control of their animal as a reasonable restraint or governing animal so that it does not injure itself, another animal, a person, or a property. So that is the statement. Did you wanna say something?
I also wanted to just interject, the city, I found it. The city does actually have two places where that specific, um, issue that you were discussing is covered in it. Um, it makes it under 215.100, it requires a dog owner to not be in a public place without some way to collect experiment from the dog, or pick it up. Um, and then 215.100, it actually makes it a nuisance to, um, allow your dog to, uh, dedicate on the other place or premises not owned by the dog owner, so they can be represented.
So you said I need to call, or have to call police?
Yeah, you can report it to animal control or, you know.
No, I'm only reporting that pet control.
That's, that is a pet, though, Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
It's not an armadillo.
Yeah, so that is actually, it is in two different places. So, owners definitely do have a responsibility.
So, the answer is law enforcement or animal control? And is, is animal control equipped to do that already?
Not for the citation part.
Okay.
But, but the enforcement could possibly be, uh, you know, uh, encouraged by the...
Question. Police officer didn't witness the incident, would you have to have a picture or a video of the offender?
Um, you know, if you had witnessed it, your, your statement could use as evidence as well.
I'll do that after his question.
We don't necessarily...
Well, I, I thought maybe if they had a video camera on the outside of the house, that would be sufficient for the officer to see it in order to issue a citation.
Especially for identity, I'm making sure the dog is identified correctly, um, if it's off.
This is one thing that I did. I got four, I can see, I got cameras all around my house. I used that lights that come on at night because we don't have to see people. But at the same time, if the pressure's due during the daytime, like I said, in the past, I would let my children pick it up. I ain't picking it up, simply that. But, but what I'm trying to say is, I agree with what she said. If I see it, I would leave it a good witness.
Okay. So, you satisfied with that answer, Mr. Williams?
I'm satisfied, I'm on the both side.
Okay. All right. So anyone else that hears, that has that issue, you can call the police, and they could enforce that ordinance, um, as a nuisance. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Dolph for the administrative report.
Wayneville City Council, uh, September of 2024, discussed the Wayneville Park Board, held September 12th. Uh, park board members provided park reports. Uh, a park event schedule was provided. Uh, park superintendent update was also provided. There were, uh, ongoing business of Totem Pole renovation, pavilion signs, and ideas for the possibility of a Route 66 grant, which, uh, the city is currently applying for. The next meeting's October 10th. Utility Committee was held, uh, September 9th. Department updates were provided from the water, sewer, electric, and natural gas departments. Um, we are discussing, again, following the TOEFL rate increase for sanitary sewer rates. Um, we are lagging a little bit with those rates, uh, but we still are, you know, really comfortable, I think, where we're at and following that rate plan analysis and study. Uh, preliminary utility budget schedules were provided to the committee. Uh, we also discussed the electric feeder tie and extension with Scobie Powerline, as you see them now in, um, uh, implementing that project that was approved last month. Uh, again, this, this is a two-fold project. There is a project that is, uh, uh, what I would consider a feeder tie, which actually would be able to extend electric to the Summit subdivision and the residences in that area, uh, two ways. So, and then there is also, uh, another portion of that project that provides upgrade to an existing feeder that goes to the downtown area. Next utility committee meeting is scheduled for October 7th through 30th. Economic Development Committee met again on September 9th. Business spotlight was, uh, farmer's insurance. We discussed the, uh, watch fire digital sign. This was, uh, going to be used as a tool by the city, uh, putting out, um, information along Route 66. Our plans currently are to install this sign at the intersection of Highway 17 and Route 66. And again, this would be used for informational purposes by the city to the, uh, citizens and the traffic along that travel corridor. That sign has been delivered, and we are currently in the design of the, uh, I guess, the pedestal or the base of the sign. Next meeting for the Economic Development Committee is scheduled for October 7th, 5:00 p.m. Roads and Grounds met September 3rd. Uh, discussed the need for a stop sign at the intersection of Benton and Pine Street down in our park. Uh, we discussed, had a, uh, visitor who, uh, owns a business downtown on, uh, at 206 North Lynn Street and was, uh, struggling with, uh, traffic parking along the street, blocking his drive. And he was unable to make deliveries at certain times. And the committee approved to put a no parking along, uh, 206 North Street to include that driveway, so it is not blocked during his delivery times. Roads and Grounds, next meeting scheduled for October 1st, 4 o'clock. Emergency Service and Police Committee was held, uh, September 5th. The, uh, since that time, there's been some activity. We had discussed, uh, maybe a month ago, about a reserve officer who was interested in coming to the city of Wayneville, and he was sworn in last week. Tracy's sworn in. Uh, Luke, Luke Carnahan, Reserve Officer, and those are some pictures, uh, of that ceremony with, uh, his parents, grandparents, and the chief. Uh, I know that Mayor Wilson attended that, and myself, and others, and you can tell it was fairly well attended. Uh, and then, a few months ago, the Police Committee had brought to the council the opioid grant that was, uh, delivered to the city through, uh, the county. The grant was specific for a canine handler, uh, initially. And I, I told this to somebody already, but what, we kinda throw pictures up there to get you guys the appetite of what you're gonna see. Well, these are actual pictures. That is our officer and our canine. Um, her name is Aerodinamica, but we call her Arrow. So, uh, yeah. And on the car, in the center picture, it's kinda difficult to see, but to the left side of Officer Geyer, you will see in pink, that is written Arrow. So, her name is on the vehicle in pink. I thought that was kind of, uh, a nice touch by our officer. They are currently in training. I got reported just this evening that that, that the dog is the first dog at the training who is off the training boxes already. So, she appears to be very, uh, very talented.
Dog always outranges officers, the Colonel. So, technically, the dog should be important.
Okay, so we have Corporal Aerodinamica. Um, Emergency Services, we, uh, were provided with a central dispatch update. Central Dispatch calls for service with the Wayneville Police Department, 688 calls for service, and the city of Richmond at 215 calls for service. Uh, Emergency Services also, uh, was provided with, uh, a fire department update. Again, these calls for service at the Wayneville Station with 58 incidents in, uh, July, tracking at 393 for the year or the year to date. And total department training hours, fire department training hours, of 4,408. Next meeting for, uh, Emergency Services and Police Committees, October 3rd at 4 o'clock. Finance and Human Resources met, uh, September 5th. Uh, we provided the committee with, uh, department budget meetings. Uh, that would be for the 2025 budget. These are our preliminary meetings, and we have completed all but two at this point. I think we had, uh, Animal Shelter chose one of our alternate days, and we have Airport early next week. So, uh, we will be working through those. Uh, CID was, uh, delivered, had a, had a good month at 10,000 uh, this month in the CID, so you continue to see, uh, the CID grow uh, with their, uh, with their revenue. Next meeting scheduled for October 3rd, 5 o'clock. Planning and Zoning met September 10th. Had a, had a long agenda and a short meeting, so that was, uh, kinda neat. Uh, just to let you guys know, all of the, uh, ordinances that are provided are all in one neighborhood, they're all on a street. Pearson Street, which is technically not a city street within the city. And these are current residential homes that were zoned C1 during the master planning of the city. Um, but there are complications to owning a house in a C1 zoning and trying to resell that house. And so, as the commission took those into consideration, those were approved. Rezoning requests that you will see tonight are 1607 Pearson, 1609 Pearson, 1701 Pearson, 1711 Pearson. All of these zoning requests were approved by the planning and zoning. Um, next scheduled meeting is to be determined. It will be booked at 5:30, though. Uh, Board of Adjustments held no meeting, and the next scheduled meeting also will be determined. Um, special events, Hogs and Frogs this weekend. Uh, kicks off tomorrow. Um, so, go down and kind of enjoy some of the, some of the festival. I think, uh, it's, it's third year now, I believe. Very well attended. Looks like the weather's going to be really nice. Um, so, go enjoy the park as well as, uh, some of the events down there.
That's it, John? Any questions?
I've, I've got another question. Uh, how are the people gonna be able to access the park off-street? Are they gonna go there all over the other way, Benton Street?
So, when you access the park for, uh, this weekend, uh, you will, most likely, there are typically good parking spots along Pine Street off of 17, and along that stretch, okay? The park itself will be shut down. You won't be driving through the park, cause, uh, there's over 100 vendors along that, along that stretch. Um, so, access to the park will be by, uh, you know, walking only, and you would have to utilize, if you have, um, Benton Street, there's a small parking lot there. You would have to utilize some of the, uh, other parking that is made available. And again, there's a nice parking area off of, uh, Pine Street there that is made available also.
Or have all blocked in the North Street? And then Benton Street is full straight up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Right here, any other questions? All right, thank you, John. We have a council discussion. I do have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, uh, but I'm gonna open it to the council first. Is there anything that the council has a question on? I know we just kinda talked a little bit about that, uh, ordinance for the dogs and responsibilities, all right?
I've noticed in the last, well, actually, I've lived in my neighborhood for about 20 years, I'm in Ward 4, and we're having a, the deer population just keeps, it just keeps increasing. And every night, go home, six, seven deer, you know, yearlings, bucks, everything. And I was wondering if there's, you know, I don't really know what to do about it, they, they come and eat all... they come and eat all the flowers and everything, and neighbors, they complain about it, but what do you do with that? They're really getting thick. We have people that put out these feeders and so forth, that's drawing some more. In fact, when they do that as well, I think it's becoming a concern, as it is in other neighborhoods throughout the city.
So, in working with NBC, this isn't the first time this topic has come up within the city, and we've worked with Conservation Department a couple times. It is really, it can be a hot topic. I mean, it can be polarized with, you know, the discussion. At the end of the day, the Conservation Department is supportive of having a healthy deer population and not a overpopulation. So, you know, they're very, they're very aware of the population and even travel corridors of the deer within the city. They, they are, have even offered to try to implement some sort of urban hunt within the city, okay? But with that, it also takes landowner cooperation. Obviously, you know, subdivisions are out. They're looking for larger parcels of land within the city that are agriculturally zoned, and then it's by permission only. And then, city property could also be allowed to be one of those. And recently, and I believe this is the first year, that the City of Lebanon, Lebanon actually had a urban deer herd. And again, it's archery only, you know, meets all the, and I haven't heard really what, what or where or how they acquired the property that they allow these, you know, archers to, to hunt. So, that, that is something, though, that definitely, as the populations increase, your, your vehicle gear accidents also increase, and, and, you know, it's kind of, I think there's a fine balance there that the city needs to try to find. And if that, if that includes implementing an, an urban boar season, then I think we would be, you know, open to that suggestion.
I think we're getting close to that. I know it's, I know their, the populations are picking up tremendously. One, one of the things is people are putting these deer feeders out, and they draw them in, and that's creating an issue. There's two or three of them in my neighborhood. I mean, they were nice for a while, but now instead of seeing one or two deer, now you see, you know, 10, 15, 12, 13, 14 deer. And then, as the weather starts to cool down, you know, the, the bucks going, they get more aggressive, and they're, they're all over the roads and everything. People are gonna start hitting them, if that's what the issue is.
And we see that every year through that cycle. We see a large increase through the October, November timeframe of, you know, accidents with, with deer in, in the year.
So, we gotta still kind of talk about a plan going forward with that? I know there's gonna be, there's two different views on that. The, the one that feeds them view, the one that eats them view. And we just gotta find something in between that'll, you know, be an effective solution for that, that issue. But it is a safety issue when it comes to driving on, on 17.
Right.
That becomes a big issue for a lot of us, because they come straight out of those bushes.
Center by the, roundabout area down there, so there hasn't been a lot of deer ever down in that particular area.
So, I, I agree, something has to be done with that piece. Is there any other? I did want to bring up something. Everyone received an email about checking the, the different neighborhoods for buildings, homes, property damage, things like that, abandoned cars, abandoned vehicles, yards that were not maintained. And the, and the reason why I sent that out is because we want to try to get a good handle on what properties we have in our wards that are much abandoned and just have been left. And we have to create a good list to help our, the city out. As far as their grass being grown, overgrown, and not taken care of, I mean, I don't know how many that we have in each particular ward, but that's what we're looking for. And of course, anything out there that, that needs to be addressed by the city, such as potholes, road signs, some people steal stop signs, some people steal our signs on the names of the roads, which become a problem for emergency vehicles in response and going to those areas. Yeah, they have the digital portion, they, they may know the community, but sometimes you get new employees, and they work in, in those areas, and they need to know, they can look at the signs and verify that stuff, so, or, or any other reason. Not necessarily emergency, but Domino's or whoever is delivering your food, you want it to come to your house. But just things like that, so that's why, that's why that information was sent out. So, if you can, as soon as you can get that information back, that'll be, that'll be great. Actually, at this MML conference, there was an idea of how we could streamline that for us as far as communication-wise, and we'll be looking at that in the next couple of months as I do a little bit more research on what it'd be free. I'm always gonna look for free first, and what can, what we can use to, to help us to track it as, as a team of council, so we can help the, the city staff and our codes to be able to have one good list that we can manage. One last thing, this is pretty much a request. Last year, is everybody familiar about the Junior Civic Leader Program? I started last year. I had one volunteer last year, or one mentor, mentee, that, that went through that program, and I wanted to expand it this next summer for the month of June. I want to expand it to three, but I want to, I want to request, and for your consideration, a $300 scholarship for each person that completes this one-month-long program. And it's not just them showing up and going to meetings, um, they're gonna have a task if they do. One of the things that I want to do is be able to acquire, I gotta go through a driver's test, but to drive a city vehicle, and I heard the grader is real tough, Miriam, I think they call her Colonel or something, or General. But she's, she does that, but I want to be able to take them to other places and kind of expand that knowledge. And also, it's all about stimulating that, or connecting dots with our high school, and hopefully, we can have some of those students that want to come back and be a part of our municipalities, all right, and, and work here. And as we expose them to a different avenue before they go off to college. But that's just something I wanted to do. What do you guys think? And I'm open for it, you can say no, heck no, whatever. I'm all, I'm all good.
I say absolutely. That was a young lady we had come in here, and she spoke about last year, was she going to Missouri or something?
She, she is actually gonna, she's helping me put the application together, the process, they're gonna be the first layer of selection, and then I'll be the second layer of the selection process. So, we, we're kind of working together on a way to do it. The only ask that I, that I request is the $300 scholarship for three, three candidates, just for that summer, for the month of June. And they'll, they'll, of course, in our, the third week of our, when we have a council meeting in June, then that's when they'll be presenting their awards and scholarships. But, but they'll do the work before that.
Got a question there. Does our high school still have a NACA?
They do.
That would be a good point, to talk to that instructor, maybe find some help.
Yeah. The, the person, she's actually on the council, so she works with the council, and then I can bring that up too, to, as far as a pool of soldiers, soldiers. I'm sorry, I'm taking everybody to the Army. But as a, as a, as some viable candidates, I think, yeah, we can open that up. But I did want to make sure that we didn't have, it wasn't, it was open to everybody, you know, and not just people in those organizations. But I'll say that. And of course, I'll, I'll give you a formalized copy of what the program's gonna look like and what kind of training and things that they're gonna go through to make it better. This first one was, was pretty good, but I think I can make it better. Any questions? All right, and then when it comes to being finalized, we'll come back with the official vote if we have to do that, but I'll make sure I get you guys the documents so that you can kind of see what the layout and program is. That's pretty much all I have as far as council discussion. Let's move on to the items for consideration tonight, our ordinances. We'll go first with proposed ordinance HB 2024-30. Madam Clerk?
First reading and ordinance amending Chapter 620 of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville, Missouri regarding rates and fees of the city's utilities sewer service fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 620 of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville, Missouri regarding rates and fees of the city's utilities sewer service fixing and effective date.
A motion? Mr. Rice, motion, second? We got the second by Mr. Hyatt. Discussion.
Question. Are ordinance that we have and our summary proposed rates, the numbers don't match?
That's right. So, we're a little behind on the availability, and they, they probably will never truly match. We may be finished here. So, as you're looking at the numbers that you have, those numbers were derived through the study provided by TOEFL, okay? And keep in mind, that study has some age on it, and there's two things. When you, when you go through a rate study with TOEFL or any engineering, they are assessing your system and where they believe you should be running your system. But there's also the backside to that, as with the employees that we have, we, we evaluate these departments every year, not only by their efficiency and being able to, you know, provide service for that department, but also with their budget. And each year, as we go through their budgets, we're looking at trying, you don't want to raise rates if you don't have to, I think, and that's kind of where we're at. So, what you're gonna see as an availability fee is probably a dollar off, and your user rate is gonna be a little bit off. And if you look at the time versus 2025, and then they even extended it out to 2026, we may not do those increases as we continue down evaluating it from both sides, the engineering side and planning side, but also the real numbers and the budget side.
So, are we currently at $21 availability rate? Do we want to go up to 22?
Twenty-one right now, yes.
Any other?
That, that threw me off, is what I was saying there.
And, and that, that sheet that's provided, we wanted to provide that study because it does have some age and, you know, with time and all the activities that we've done since that study, I, I wanted to provide that as part of this. So, there could be some discussion, and you could see that the city's not raising it at the rate that the study shows, and that's because on the backside of this, as we review budgets each year, we may not need to raise that final 30% or five, you know? They wanted us to raise 30% in sewer. We may back off that because we're starting to get up where we see, we're not here to make money, we're here to provide a service, and that's, that's why we evaluate that in two ways.
So, how much did the other go up? I know the availability went from 21 to 22.
Went from 368 to 386.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call roll.
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Okay, that passes. We'll go on to proposed ordinance HB 2024-31.
First reading and ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to execute a TVN Terminal Construction Project contract, federal assistance between the City of Waynesville, the City of St. Robert, and Reese Equipment Company, LLC, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to execute a TVN Terminal Construction Project contract, federal assistance between the City of Waynesville, the City of St. Robert, and Reese Equipment Company, LLC, fixing and effective date.
Motion by Mr. Hayden. Second by Mr. Rice.
Who was the first one, I'm sorry?
Discussion.
Just a question, has St. Robert acted on this yet?
No, it will be at their next council meeting.
So, when will we, assuming this passes, when would they start?
Still pushing that out to October.
Because the bats don't leave till November, right?
Correct. So, we're waiting on that. And so, this is paperwork that is required. There would be an acceptance of bid. That acceptance of bid would then lead to a notice to proceed. So, as we're going through these steps of the, of the contract and of the agreement, FAA and MoDOT have already accepted this bid. Now, the sponsors have to accept the bid, and again, St. Robert would follow, their following meeting would do that, and then there would be a notice to proceed that with the sponsors accepting that bid, the notice to proceed could be provided to the contractor, and their start date would probably be somewhere mid to late October.
Any other questions? All right, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, proposed ordinance HB 2024-32.
First reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R1 single-family residential for property located at 1609 Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R1 single-family residential for property located at 1609 Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date.
Motion by Mr. Hayden.
Right, I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Blan. Discussion.
I have a discussion. So, this property, I know where it is, will that not be zoned for agriculture and chicken farm or goat?
No chicken farms. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance HB 2024-33.
First reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R1 single-family residential for property located at 1701 Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R1 single-family residential for property located 1701 Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Rice. A second. Second by Mr. Hyatt. Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance HB 2024-34.
First reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R1 single-family residential for property located at 1607 Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R1 single-family residential for property located at 1607 Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date.
Motion. Motion by Ms. Dills, second. Mr. Hayden, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and now, final proposed ordinance HB twenty twenty-four dash three five.
First reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C two commercial to R one, single-family residential for property located at seventeen eleven Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C two commercial to R one, single-family residential for property located at seventeen eleven Pearson in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date.
All right, motion, motion. Mr. Farnum, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Bland?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, any other business, uh, Mr. Doyle?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll move on to our cit, our council comments, and we will start with Mr. Bland.
Oh, sure, um, be mindful of, uh, the schools, as, as school has gotten underway, I notice as I leave early in the morning, my windows are still being frosted, not frosted, but I can't see too very well, so I do want you to be mindful of the students in the morning, um, and, and mind your dog, for heaven's sakes.
Clean up, clean up after your dog.
Clean up after your dog, thanks.
All right, Mr. Hayden?
Um, I would just, I would just say that, uh, you know, for anybody that can do that training that I went through, I, being a new councilperson, I learned so much about areas of the city that I had no clue about, from, you know, utilities and on up, and then the conference that I, that the city allowed me to, to attend, it was awesome, uh, the classes were great, uh, networking was wonderful, there was probably five hundred people there.
Yeah.
So, it was, there was a lot of people from big cities and little cities, so it was a really good experience, so thank you to the city for letting me go.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I want to thank Mayor Wilson, he's doing a wonderful job for the city, he's always helping people, um, he's always trying to make things better, uh, we have a lot of exciting things going on in the city, more to come, appreciate your show.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, didn't have a lot of comments, didn't have a lot of comments tonight, just wanted to reiterate the, uh, the deer population, as the weather changes and it picks up, especially along Highway seventeen and, and other, other subdivisions, that everybody, you know, be cognizant of the deer running out, when they go into the rut, and they, they become more aggressive and they're in the roads, totally, people don't pay attention, so, that's it.
All right, thanks, Mr. Hyatt and Ms. Dills.
Anything I have to say is, um, as the mayor reiterated, you know, we have a responsibility as council people or for people to tell us about cleaning up your neighborhood, and reporting bad areas abandoned, and stuff like that, because we all have a where we live, I mean, it doesn't matter what neighborhood you're in, there, there's something there, and I notice that some of them have been getting cleaned up, and others just don't care, so, if you see it, report it, and that's the only way we can take care of it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hicks? I hope everybody gets out of the house this weekend, goes apart, enjoys downtown, spend some time with the family, enjoy the festivities.
Thanks, Mr. Hicks. Mr. Farnum?
I want to, can you relate what Mr. Hicks just said, get out of the house this weekend, it's gonna be pretty wet, and falls upon us, and somebody's down, so, everybody, uh, visit downtown a little.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farnum. All right, I'm gonna try to keep this short, I'm just gonna put this out here, because we made it recorded on tape, um, so, I just want to kind of break up a couple of things here, of course, before the next meeting, October fourteenth, City Hall will be closed in observance of Indigenous People Day slash Columbus Day, um, so just go ahead and plan accordingly, you got a lot of time, uh, but on the fourteenth, we'll reopen on the fifteenth, um, September twenty-seventh, we'll have the Waynesville Tiger Homecoming Parade, what does that mean? Traffic, so that means that we need to plan accordingly, um, the chief is here, what time are the roads being shut down?
Usually, it's usually just fifteen minutes to twenty minutes before the event starts.
Okay, so, at two o'clock, expect to be the, turned around, all right, so two o'clock is that time, um, the event starts at two thirty, um, of course, plan accordingly, we just want to put that information out there, um, sharing information is everyone's responsibility. Now, I want you to think about something, if you have information, you need to pass it on to your neighbors, the city is taking things above and beyond to another level, I want to list some things first, so I want you to write these down, if you're there, or rewind it later on, these are the different formats and ways that we have been sharing information from the city, Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, Twitter, or X, whatever you prefer, we're on one, one oh nine, I mean, one zero seven nine, The Coyote, the second Friday of each month, live at eight thirty, we at K F B D ninety-seven point nine on Wednesday mornings at eight, between eight thirty and nine AM, there's a city mayor podcast, which you, twenty-four hours a day, you can go in there, you can listen to weeks, you can look, you can go back in the past, and then you gotta wait on the future a little bit, but every week, there's a new, there's a new podcast, we have been very fortunate to be given a column in the Palas County Weekly every other week, um, and you can pick to go online, you can pick it up at the local, uh, grocery store, pick up your copy of that news, of what we're sharing here, everything is about this community, um, you can go to palascountyweekly.com to get information, so you can do that from your computer, uh, we have quarterly newsletters that go through the mail, we even have an electronic billboard that's, that we, we do share things on that electronic billboard, and you heard tonight, we have another one that is coming, um, we have informational videos in the atrium, out there where you're paying your bills, it's constantly playing, information about what's going on in the city, we have a city website, which is being upgraded, but we have a current website that has information on it as well, and coming, we have a, an app for the website, so you can download that if you don't like social media, the podcast, I forgot to tell you that it is ADA compliant, and we also have an opportunity for you to read the transcripts, coming from that is also gonna be a blog, so, I think we got enough areas for people to get information, at some point, we have to, as individuals in this community, we have to seek out that information, and most importantly, your last line of information is your councilman, their phone numbers are on the website, and they're just waiting for you to call, some of them are like, man, they get upset because they don't get no calls, they feel like you don't like them, but, hey, they want, they put their phone numbers out there because they want you to call them and tell them what you think, I think that's what it is, right? But anyway, um, I just wanted to share that, seriously, we are doing everything that we can to get information out to the citizens, and we need your help to share it, um, and it's a lot of good stuff that's going on, and a lot of this information is to prepare you for things that are happening, we have some road closures that are gonna be coming up, it's gonna be important for everyone to share that information, we're not doing this because we like to close roads, we're doing it because we like to improve our community, so we have that going on, and just bear with us, it's an inconvenience, short inconvenience for everyone, but the benefit outweighs the inconvenience, trust me, um, and we just look for that support, I want to thank the council for all their hard work, and then that concludes our meeting tonight.
Good job.
Oh, wait a minute, I want to say thank you to our Tiger TV students, we have Oscar, Sam, Zeta, and Alexis, let's give them a round of applause. So, I took that back, I'm gonna do it again.